Okay.
Tonight's meeting is to consider complaint number 2021 dash oh one. In accordance with board policy four point five zero point zero three two dash P. The district follows certain procedures for resolution of formal complaints by students, parents, guardians, and people who reside in the district. In order to resolve formal complaints in a fair and timely manner. The policy also provides that any complaint about the superintendent shall be reviewed by the Board of Education. We will first address in a public meeting the component of the complaint that do not pertain to confidential student records. If needed, we will then move into executive session under O R S three three two point zero six one one B. When we discuss matters pertaining to confidential student records. If that happens following the executive session, we will return to a public meeting to vote. You'll have five minutes to provide your comments tonight. And following your comments, board members may follow up with questions for you or for staff. And tonight, we're here to discuss only your complaint related to the S E I investigation. I know that there are other complaints you have before O D E and other pending complaints that you have filed who are not part of our agenda this evening. So, Mr. Makin, would you like to begin?
Sure. I just want to start by saying that this has been a great process, you know. You guys don't know me. Most people that know me, they love hearing my story. So I was going to give you guys a story tonight. I built a house over in northeast Portland, over on Seventeenth. And I acted as a general on it. And it was this plumber that was referred to me. And we had the meeting in the morning and he was so rude. And he was from New York. He was just rude and talking to me disrespectfully and laughing at my project and looking at my plans and writing. Like, what is going on? Finally, I'm like, dude, what's wrong with you? You disrespected me. I'm the boss. I'm in charge, you know. And I'm like, look, I gotta think about hiring somebody like you. I don't like you. He's too edgy, you know. And I called him back in less than two minutes and I said, I'll pay you cash. Because it's like, this is a professional. And he was one of the best people I ever hired and he's a friend of mine today. And I feel like that's been our relationship. I've been talking, I'm a little edgy and I've been talking the way I communicate, but it looked like we're moving forward with things. The superintendent agreed with me that the bucket was not a part of black culture and it shouldn't have been in the African American Assembly. We have that in writing. He agreed with me on one of my complaints on that. I also tricked the superintendent into a retaliatory. I was talking about retaliation. You guys didn't recognize it until you got to the board. The complaint process now, if I had anything to do with it or not, but during that time, you guys have done a good job at fixing the complaint process. It's more automated where you could check things off. You could say it's discrimination. You could, you know, it's a better process. I noticed the processes have evolved. I brought up another issue. The superintendent seems to be able to bring anybody he wants inside of these board meetings. But now you guys are putting, you know, in your complaint process, you're saying these are the people that will be in the board meeting. So we're, I find out we're doing very good. I mean, I talked about the P T A, the P T A page shouldn't have Vernon on it. Brim Edwards reached out to me personally and said, yeah, this is a violation of policy. And what the P T A doing is not right. We want them to remove the page. And you guys have, it's been, our relationship has been up and down, but we're actually getting stuff done, you know. So I really appreciate all you guys' hard work and the things that you, you're doing. Danny LaDesma came out with a policy saying that cultures are different. You know, my black culture is different from the black culture in Portland. I grew up around a hundred percent black people. That's including black teachers, black instructors, black principals. So I see things a lot differently than black people do here. She wrote in her own, she wrote a policy saying that we should listen to different spectrums of one culture. So from this point forward, I think we're, we're doing pretty good. The O D E is picking these things up. The O D E wants to pick up the sexual assault on the investigation. So like, like the great Amy Constance say, we got more work to be done. So as far as the sexual assault case, I believe, and I wrote in my complaint, I believe it's criminal. I believe the superintendent covered up with his investigation. In the investigation, it clearly said things, even during that time, we're talking about the Me Too movement. This, the board is predominantly women. I'm shocked that you guys, as women, you wasn't offended by this. And there was no structure set up to protect Finney Jeremy and her family. The superintendent decided to do an investigation. She didn't decide to do the investigation in P P S. Now, her family is no longer part of P P S, just like my family. I, I, I just wanted an African American Assembly that reflected actually the things that the superintendent memos that he gives to his administration. He has a great memo that he wrote. I don't know if it was a policy or something, but his administration knows how he wants an African American Assembly date to look. And yet, his administration has yet, over the course of three years, have yet to do exactly what he wants. So man, that's about it. That's all, that's all I gotta say about it. I know that the board is going to go in one direction. My goal was to move these crimes into the DOJ.
Thank you, Mr. Makin. Members, are there any questions for Mr. Makin or for staff at this time?
I have a couple of questions for staff. That's okay? Is that okay?
Yes, I asked if there were questions.
Okay, I just, I didn't, I don't want to, if people had questions, Mr. Makin. So looking at the complaint that was filed, there are a host of issues that are raised. I, it's my understanding that O D E has told the district that we didn't need to answer those because they're already in the process. So tonight's review is a narrower scope. Is that correct? And I'm not sure if that's directed to Ms. Large or Ms. Kane or Ms. LaDesma.
Address that. Yes, I can, the, the first page of the complaint contains five questions which assert that O D E has requested them. Because they were more related to the earlier complaints that had gone to the O D E last summer. We confirmed with, I confirmed with the O D E investigator that we were not to answer these questions. They were in the middle of their investigation. So we are not responding to them. They are, this line of questioning and the scope of these questions is currently under review by O D E.
Great. And then coming out of the investigation that was done by the district, there were a number of recommendations that were made. And was that, did did M F R go back and check or did P P S look at, do the look back of whether the recommendations were implemented? I know somebody did. I just want to confirm that the issues that got raised in the report were addressed.
I can answer that as well. There were recommendations made by M F R and as well as the county. And both entities did a review to see that those were in place. And you can speak more to the current, to some of the issues around training. Because what we determined would be the best course of action is for many of the, our partners in Danny's portfolio. Because they have, they spend so much time with students that it would serve them and us for them to do all of the mandatory trainings that we require of staff. And so that's been in place since twenty nineteen, Danny, twenty?
That's correct. So S E I, S E I was the, you know, sort of their staff with their C O O. Libra Ford at the time, they completed the, the two specified trainings around sexual harassment and reporting child abuse. They did that training as, before we resume services with them. And since then, S E I has, has ensured that through both the SUN program, that the Multnomah County manages their contract and through the R E S J programming in which we directly manage the contract. They are all, all of their staff who have direct unsupervised contact with students attend all of the required trainings each year and it stipulated at the outset of the contracts. And since this was a larger contract, you saw in your board review of the contracts, the listing in that contract that stipulates that. We check, we routinely sort of check in on our, our contractors. So they're reporting once a quarter to us as well as folks from the Office of Student Support Service, no, the Office of Performance. Office of Student Performance. I forgot the office, Russ's office. They do, they sort of check in on all of the training, all the, all of, excuse me, all the reporting. And then staff in my shop check in on all the training and monitor the training.
I, I have some information on the Multnomah County.
Mr. Makin?
Yes, give them your full information.
Can I finish my questions?
Okay, I just want to, I want to rebut that because that's false what they're doing.
Well, that's the chair's call of what they can say. I'd like to.
Okay, I don't, I don't have to be here then. If I don't comment, because what right now, right now, what they're saying is false. And I just want to rebut, would I have the opportunity to rebut it? Yes or no? Because I have an information act on Multnomah County and I could tell you exactly what you're asking, Ms. Edwards. If you want the right information, Ms. Edwards, I could give it to you. But if you want the district's version of the superintendent's version of his version of it, then I don't have to be here.
Mr. Makin, I think the, the purpose at this time is for us to ask questions of staff and of you. So I think that you can go ahead and, and share that insight. I think that Director Brim Edwards, did you need what you wanted from staff on that? And then we can have Mr. Makin answer his opinion or his information.
Yeah, I have just a couple.
Let's let him respond to this question and then you can go back to your others. And I also did want to let you know that Michelle was able to join via phone. So she is, she passed, is now here in the meeting. So just wanted to indicate that. All right, Mr. Makin, would you like to respond?
Yeah, the, I have, I've, I've been speaking with Multnomah County too, an attorney, not the Attorney General, I get that wrong. The, the District Attorney of Oregon. And they wasn't giving me information. They didn't, they actually didn't run an investigation on S E I. And I have, if you need to see that, Ms. Edwards, I could get that to you. So if the superintendent didn't run an investigation and Multnomah County didn't run an investigation, that, that just simply means there was no investigation ran. Multnomah County said what they did is they did a renewal of a license. That's not an investigation. So if you need that information, I could get it to you. And what it appears that the superintendent did was the same thing. It looked like he renewed the license despite all of these allegations. Their license was out and it looked like they renewed the license. I have proof of that.
Mr. Makin, this is Michelle DePass calling. I have a quick question. I was late joining the meeting. What, what are you hoping to get out of all this? I'm not sure if you can hear me or not.
I can't hear you. I'm sorry. My internet's jumping in and out. I'm sorry.
Yeah, my, mine is down as well. I was, my, my question was, what are you hoping to get from this evening tonight? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm late. Maybe that was explained earlier.
Well, you missed all of the compliments I gave you guys. That's too bad. I'll, I'll email them to you. I spent most of my time saying what a good job you guys are doing. What I'm hoping to get is the, the board to actually begin to start protecting. I'm concerned about my daughter's safety while in the school. And this, this investigation and how it ties in with buckets being played at an African American Assembly, it ties in. It also ties into the Mitch Whitehurst case. This was one year you guys had all of that information about the Miss Whitehurst case. You wasn't there at the time, Ms. DePass. But none of that information was used. And this was only less than one year later, I believe, or maybe not that far, maybe eight months. I'm not sure. And I'm looking for the school board to take action. Because Ms. Brim Edwards said it herself at, at the board hearing. It's your responsibility. So if my daughter is not being held safe, I spoke out, just like the people spoke out in Jefferson. And they were discriminated and retaliated against. There were little kids that called me hater during an African American Assembly by the same organization. That happened in, in Jefferson. So I would like for the board to take responsibility. You guys run off equity. The test scores are low. I was made to felt uncomfortable while I was in the school. I sent that to you guys multiple times. There was nothing done. So I would like for you guys to look at this investigation and say, hey, he's right. His own employee said from, from two different periods that there's a lot of allegations that's in this organization. His own employee said that. So I would like for you guys to take this more seriously because I believe this is reflected upon the test scores. You guys have demonstrated, they said, just like the superintendent said with the buckets. He said it was a part of my culture. Buckets are not a part of my culture. And just like in this case, they said sexual assault and touching kids for a long time is a part of black culture. It's just not true. So I, what I would like is for the board to supersede this guy that you hired. You're the boss. He's not. He's out of control. Every, every, every school, I'm calling him a racist. I know people in this community that don't even have kids in P P S. And they talk about what if this is the worst superintendent we've ever had. They don't even have kids. How do you know? So we need the board, you guys hired this guy. You put this guy upon my lap. Now, I would like my daughter to go back to Vernon School. And I would like to feel safe there. Right now, I have to pull her out of Vernon School. I had to buy a house outside of the district in this market because you guys did nothing to protect me. You did nothing to protect Finney Jeremy. You did nothing to protect the kids in Jefferson. You gotta, I want you guys to run an investigation and remove this criminal outside of Multnomah County.
Director Brim Edwards, did you have further questions?
I, I do and I, I have some comments, but I'll save it till after the question period. So one of the questions I have relates to sort of learnings from the Whitehurst investigation. And based on the Whitehurst investigation, we now have a system that allows P P S to keep permanent records on certain circumstan, certain circumstances based on sort of adult misconduct. And my question, and I think this is either for Mary Kane or Liz Large, whether at this point in time contractor, we now have the capability that, just like the same standards we'd hold our own employees for, that contractors would as well?
We have a program.
Go ahead, Mary. Go ahead, Mary.
Oh, sorry. We have, as you are aware, a program called Origami that allows us to file matters of concern rather through, it's typically used for employees, but actually since, since S B one fifty-five came into effect, we have also been documenting those incidents of non-employees that we receive either from a variety of sources, either from community members or from DHS or from O D E, depending on where it comes from. So we do have, we are maintaining a list of all, even those that are unsubstantiated so that we can go back if we need to.
And that, that's the case with the findings we had from this as well?
I'm sorry.
Any findings of misconduct, whether they're P P S staff or contractor would be in our sort of permanent record systems?
We are putting those in, yes, this has become our practice.
That's.
In our new, in our new record system, but not historically.
I would like to comment on that.
So that's the chairs. I'm done with my questions and I'll have some comments to make at the, at the end when we get to the discussion part.
Mr. Makin, what was your comment?
Well, once again, Mary is either, she's exaggerating or she don't understand what's going on. Ms. Kane, I'm sorry. Look, inside the investigation, they said that S E I would start teaching that touching kids was okay. He was going to oversee that inside the superintendent's investigation. Ms. Edwards is cherry picking, to say the least, parts of the investigation. Now, if you have a person, you have an organization with a historical record of doing sexual, sex, things in sexual nature to kids that is not appropriate by the legal standards. And then now the superintendent, the superintendent investigation says that he or the organization is going to be the one that oversees that. So it's not true what you guys are saying. You guys have to miss out what you said in the board, you said in the meeting that you didn't have to read my complaints because it's legal and I agree with you. You don't have to read them. But when you ran for office, you said that you were going to run on equity issues. So if a black man is coming up here saying that his daughter's not going to be educated and she's not because the records show that, and I'm concerned with my daughter's safety inside the school. We had, we had a teacher that came after my daughter. We had the P T A that came after and we've had the superintendent's staffers that's threatened me this entire time. So Ms. Edwards, I miss, you can't have, in the report, it says that this, that the, the, the person that did the crime is going to oversee the results. So you can't change that. I'm sorry, you just can't change it. I mean, you guys want to make this easy as possible for you guys. But what this is going to look like at the next level, it's going to look like an organization P P S that has a historical record of not taking care of black people. I could get multiple people that's going to come up and speak before us. And what it's going to look like is an African American man that's not asking for anything but an education and the safety of his daughter. That's all this is going to look like. And that's all this is. I want my daughter to be equally educated like white people. I, I presented programs to the superintendent and he said no to my programs. There's a double standard in this district. And it's in terms of sexual assault and sexual nature is a double standard as well. So if you're black in P P S, you're not going to be educated. You're not going to be comfortable in the school. And I can't walk inside the school to even protect my daughter from being sexual things happening to her. I proved that. And that's what the O D E is looking at. So I'm asking the board, you guys ran off equity. This is it. This is your opportunity. Stop writing policies and not following your own policies. Brim Edwards said it was perfectly fine to not read my complaints as a black man. And I'm just speaking out for my daughter's rights.
Mr. Makin, I want to clarify that my, my remembering of that statement by Director Brim Edwards was in that board members are not legally obligated. I believe that Director Brim Edwards does read everything. I think she was addressing the rules around what a board member is required to do. So I thought I would say this. So Ms. Ford, Ms. Ford wants a moment to respond. So we're gonna go ahead and invite Ms. Ford to speak at this time.
Ms. Ford?
We're gonna have to get her a link to the meeting.
Okay, Cara will go ahead. I see her here on the attendees. Teleport her into the room.
And, and while she's coming in, I do want to say that your recollection is correct, Chair Lowry. I do read everything, every word and, but.
Oh, I know you do. Yeah.
But you'd ask whether it's a requirement, Mr. Makin?
I understand that.
I didn't say it's, I didn't say it's okay, but I said you'd ask whether it was a requirement and it's, it's not.
And I could tell, if no one understands, I could tell you why it's not required. It's required because I have the opportunity to appeal. So it's not. Well, I was just explaining just, okay. You know, I understand that.
All right, Ms. Ford, thank you for joining us tonight.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for giving me a moment and for you all attending here and using your time.
I'm having a little bit of a hard time hearing you. I don't know if that's true for others. I do have an A C unit next to me.
I can hear.
I'm able, I heard it over here.
I can hear. Hi, Libra.
Hi, everyone. I just want to clarify two things, please. I'd like to clarify the fact that we're using the word sexual assault. This lawsuit in no place said sexual assault. So that's the first thing I'd like to bring up. The second thing I'd like to bring up is that we're using the words of touching children in a lawsuit. That was neither in the lawsuit. No words of touching anyone was in the lawsuit. And I'm sorry, I do have a third point that was mentioned here that we were not investigated by Multnomah County. We were investigated by Multnomah County and if it's necessary for me to give dates, I can do that.
I got dates too. I got information saying that they said it was an investigation.
Thank you both. Are there any further board questions for staff?
I, I would like to. Ms. Leaper just said, I mean, Ms. Ford just said, the O D E is, they're calling it sexual assault and sexual misconduct.
Questions at this time?
Oh, okay.
All right, if there are no further board member questions at this time, we are going to now vote on complaint number twenty twenty-one zero two. The question before us is, are we going to substantiate the complaint? So do I have a motion?
Can I say one thing?
Let us get the motion on the table, Mr. Makin.
May I say something, Ailey?
Hang on one second. Let me, let's get the motion on the table, Michelle, and then we can have you speak and we can have Mr. Makin speak. So who?
No, 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 no. May I speak first? Please.
So can we just?
I'm not, I don't, I don't.
Okay, Michelle, go ahead.
Ailey, please do not interrupt me. I can't see anybody. I'm having a difficult time hearing. And I'm really tired of being hushed. Please don't hush me again. Is that, is that clear?
Yes. It's clear to me.
I, I thought we were getting the motion on the table to have discussion.
Don't hush it.
I, I just wanted to say that I'm very tired of being hushed. I'm not a really loud person. And I really don't like screaming over people. This is very uncomfortable for me personally. But it was even more uncomfortable to be hushed due to process, due to whatever the Roberts rules. And it's not the first time. And so I'm, I'm sorry, I'm emotional about it. I just have a question. I, is there an opportunity to talk about this more rather than rushing through the motion and what's on the table and who can talk and who cannot talk? Or can we have an open discussion until we're done talking about it? I don't feel like we're done talking about it. So I don't know what motion you're looking for, but I don't feel like we are done. We are not done with the discussions. I don't, you have a time thing to keep, but we don't, we're not done.
Michelle, I had asked if there were any more questions and I am sorry that I didn't hear you. Did you have further questions or comments about this complaint before us?
I just told you that I'm having a very difficult time hearing the meeting. It's coming in and out for me. And, and I can't see people, so that I'm a little bit, I mean, I'm just embarrassed because I can't see your faces. I can't see people raising hands. I'm just curious if we, are we done talking about it? Are we gonna just put a motion on the table and act like nothing happened? Are we done? I don't, I don't feel like I.
Well, I think the question is, are there any more questions? Because Ailey asked for more questions. So if there are more questions, then we're not done.
I think that, I think that just the confusion may have been that is, it was like, we're going to make a motion for a vote and it's just like, we're making a motion so that we can actually have the discussion, I think is what.
That's correct.
So it, and the answer, the answer.
That's correct.
We're not, we're not done. It just, and so you could either speak now or you could speak after it's on the table. Either way.
And, and yeah, I misunderstood. I thought we were making motions to speak alone and I apologize for raising my voice. I'm, I'm talking over, not air conditioning, but a cooling apparatus and, and also the sound is coming in and out for me.
And, and Ms. Edwards.
Making a motion. Making a motion.
Sorry, Michelle, you're.
An opportunity for discussion after the motion is on the table.
That's perfect. And Michelle, your sound is also coming in and out and there are multiple people talking, so I can't always hear what's going on. So my intention was not to shush you or silence you. I was just trying to move us forward so that we could have the discussion. So I apologize if that's what you felt like was happening, but but I'm not hearing, I'm only hearing about um every, I'm hearing like nine out of ten words that you're saying.
That's about what I'm hearing as well. Again, I apologize for raising my voice. Um, I, if the motion is for for us to open this up for discussion, I'm I'm good with that. Thank you.
Yeah, so let's, the, so I will go ahead and and redo that. Um, the the motion before us is um do we substantiate the complaint? Do I have a motion for this um measure?
Chair Lowry.
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt. Um when you stated the the complaint number, I am not sure if I heard you correctly, but I believe that we're looking at twenty twenty-one dash zero-one.
Yes, sorry.
I thought I heard two. I just wanted to make sure.
I'm sorry, I probably said it incorrectly. The board will now vote on complaint, so number twenty twenty-one dash zero-one.
Chair Lowry, just the form of the the um motion, I'm sorry, I'm just asking because.
If you wanna change the form, I'm totally happy to change the form.
Well, I was just wondering because this actually didn't go to the superintendent, so we're not upholding, this came directly to the board is is my understanding, so we're not um upholding the superintendent. We're just, we're making a, we're making a finding, I think, and voting on it.
That's why the language, the proposed language I made is, do you substantiate the complaint rather than having it be about um the complaint that's brought forward to us. But we can revise that language if it's unclear.
Okay. And but it's not the complaint, the whole complaint, because we've um it's been narrowed to a smaller subset of issues because some of them are already in the process.
That's not what Mary said. I mean, Ms. Kane said.
I just wanna I understand what I'm, I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm trying to understand what we're voting on.
The only, the only complaint or portion of complaint before you right now concerns the SEI investigation arising out of the Fendi Jeremy allegations.
Okay, that's what we're voting on.
Yeah, the only thing we're voting on is the the SEI Fendi Jeremy allegations of the complaint. Okay, so do I have, do the most, the the proposed language before us is, do we substantiate the complaint? Do I have a motion in a second for that uh language? Or do we wanna change the language?
How about to be um uh maybe more precise is that we're substantiating or um the the portion of the complaint that's not, that is um still not, that the board has not previously ruled on or that isn't before ODE.
Great, that like that language works, does it, Liz?
I I think so. To the extent, there are, there are numerous complaints um that that are at various stages and there still is one that's in a step one, step two level. And I don't think there are any strands of it in here, but I I I think defining it by the subject matter instead of what it's not is better.
So that, so it would be that this is substantiating that the um the district um investigated and the SEI complaint and that um we are finding that there was a valid investigation or is there some other part of that?
I think you can uphold the sufficiency of the investigation. That is how I'd like to frame the motion.
That's exactly right.
Or or reject it. You get to vote up or down on that question.
Or reject.
Okay.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm not, you guys, all right.
We have language for motion and if we get that, we're very clear. Um we still don't have a motion in a second on this language. We wanna be clear on what we're talking about.
So moved of this, that we're gonna uphold the sufficiency of the district's investigation of the SEI complaint.
Second.
Great, so and it's are we? Not, oh, well, I guess, yeah. Okay, so Director Brem Edwards moves and Director Comstan seconds. Um, is there further discussion on this matter?
Yours?
Yeah, I'll pull it up.
Yeah, cuz this one's.
Yes.
Is there further discussion on this matter at this time?
I I have a comment.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Makin.
Ms. Ford, uh when she spoke, she said it wasn't um touching or sexual assault in the language of the original complaint. What I would like to remind Ms. Ford, if she doesn't know it, is that the victim or the victims is not the one that just that determined the language. It's the ODE and the DOJ. Uh, when I spoke with the DOJ, and if you need evidence of this, I can send it to you, Ms. Ford, uh the DOJ is calling it sexual misconduct and they're calling it sexual assault. So that's why I'm using that language. I'm using the same language that the ODE use. It's determined upon them to tell me what the language is as a taxpayer and then I'm able, because my daughter is possibly a victim of your organization, soon to be victim.
There, uh thank you for uh.
Yeah.
Mr. Makin, is there any other discussion on um this piece of the complaint that deals with the Fendi Jeremy and SEI?
Well, I'll I'll offer some comments. Um I believe the district hired somebody who was qualified to do the investigation. They did a thorough investigation. They came up with a set of findings um and included actions against some employees and they made a series of recommendations. Um it it appears um that those recommendations have been implemented and that there's policies in place um where where if there, if there hadn't been one, that there's policies, policies in place and that the district um in following on the Whitehurst investigation, made a whole host of changes to its to its policies and those were done um under the leadership of the superintendent uh and the and the board and that they've been implemented and it's a continuous process and we've made a commitment that um individuals interact with our students um will get training and that um if there's cases of misconduct, that we have a a method of knowing and keeping track of um that misconduct. So I um I'm gonna uphold the um the fact that we very clearly, an investigation happened and that there has, there has been actions.
I would like to make a comment before you vote, Ms. Edwards, and I want you to think about this.
That's not our process.
Your process, your process is to have the kids get hurt. That's your process.
Director Brem Edwards, did you have anything further to say?
Uh, no.
Can I just, can I just wanna make one more comment and I'll promise I'll be quiet.
Let me see if there's any further board discussion and then I'll have a final response before we vote, vote, Mr. Makin. Is there other further board discussion on the matter before us? Michelle, did you have anything you wanted to add or say here?
My, my only question had to be, because I don't, I don't know this, haven't investigated it, was was what what we had done in response to the investigation. I was curious whether we implemented, um if we've made any changes to, I mean, I I understand we've done professional development. One of it was a different place to assure that not not necessarily that these things won't happen, but more do we, when they do happen, that we have a way of um reporting of um protecting people that are whistleblowers, you know, against retaliation and that, and that's because I was more interested in our whether we, whether we put things in place to safeguard people that have the courage to step forward, especially considering that, you know, this happened, I think, before the DC movement. Um, and so that that's, my questions are around that. We're around, what do we do now?
Mary, Mary, can you maybe like go into the things that were in that memo that describe what we, the safeguards we put in place?
Um, yes, uh um, as I mentioned, uh we have an SEI on their own. Um, I I think Libra can speak to the um HR changes that were made, which would address some of the whistleblowing of uh questions that you have. But from the district side of things, we have a number of reporting um mechanisms to allow both for uh reporting anonymously or reporting um to uh to our Title IX director. We have um Safe Oregon, which allows for reports to go in not directly to PPS but to um DHS and law enforcement and then it's directed back to us for us to conduct investigations. We also have Now Let's Talk, which is an app which allows people to um provide information that they think is important for us to know and we respond as best we can. We have a workplace harassment now um process that allows for um employees to report things that happen on the job and we um have a very timely response to it, including providing them with supports um to help them through the process. I think that's the biggest change we've made over the last couple of years is having supports for people who have both been um victims and for people who are reporting things that have occurred.
And if I could just add that as part of the RESJ set of partnerships, um and again, these are culturally specific organizations that not only in their fidelity to culturally responsive programming, they also have fidelity to a definition of a culturally responsive organization that has not only reflective staff but accountability to at the, at their board level as well as in their services to the community for which they say that they serve. Um, that this set of organizations are amongst the most highly scrutinized scrutinized set of organizations in the city of Portland. So as a, as a part of our redesign, our our sixteen culturally specific and multiracial organizations have the most stringent uh in terms of application in order to be funded. If you look at our RFP um as well as our reporting and ongoing monitoring uh compared to over the last year and in in a collaboration with other funders, PPS and our management of these contracts and the relationships is among the most uh stringent in terms of having that two-way communication that scrutiny of over the services. And so I just wanted, I wanna um wanna also caution that while we do need to take very seriously any allegation of any type of abuse for children, we also have a responsibility to um to interrupt and to disrupt racist cultural narratives that somehow says that a culturally specific organization is dangerous to serve the students for which are in their community when there is a level of accountability to community that is very different than white-led organizations or mainstream organizations. So I would, I I just wanna be really clear that in our partnership and the the development of the redesign, which is, which took, you know, a good eighteen months to to redesign this and this has been our first year of implementing this. When I talk to folks at the Oregon Department of Education, to my colleagues across the country and to other local funders, including jurisdictional funders like the city of Portland and Multnomah County, we are the most uh stringent and have the have the most monitoring uh in terms of reporting and fidelity to the services uh that which organizations like SEI provide.
No, and I I really appreciate that, Sammy. Thank you. I I do know uh for certain that um organizations serving communities of color um are under a different level of um scrutiny than white-led organizations and um I appreciate the reminder to um to consider that as we're talking about this today. So thank you.
I I would like to, can I make a comment on that, please?
We're gonna, Mr. Makin, we're gonna let our um board colleagues finish their discussion and then we'll let you respond at the end of that and before we vote.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Uh, is there any further discussion at this time from board members?
Yeah, thanks, Chair Lowry. I'll um, I'll just, I'll echo some of the earlier comments by Director Brem Edwards. I I also reviewed um you know, the complaint and the response and and I I I feel as though the investigation, you know, was sufficient and and did what we needed it to do, uh you know, to to move forward. Um and so, you know, I also will vote, make sure I get this right, to uphold the sufficiency of the investigation. I've appreciated the comments. I've appreciated hearing, you know, from Mr. Makin tonight. I've appreciated comments from 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 Ms. Ford and 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 others as well. Um, one of the things that I I don't appreciate and I do think it needs to be called out were the ad hominem attacks on our superintendent tonight. Um, and I think they were uncalled for and then warranted. And I just want to say that in my experience on the board for the last two years, um Superintendent Guerrero has been um a very strong force um to make PPS into an anti-racist organization um and lives that every day and I think actually um pushes the board to live that and pushes the community to live that as well. And I just, I don't want those to go unremarked um in tonight's um proceedings, but I will be voting to uphold the sufficiency of the investigation.
Any further board discussion?
Just, uh, thank you and I agree with what's been said by my fellow board members.
Yeah, thank you. And I I didn't hear anything um surging about the superintendent, but I would agree that, you know, this absolutely is not the forum for that and it's actually not what we're really discussing. So um I appreciate you bringing that forward, Andrew.
All right, um I believe the board is now ready to vote. Let's hear a final statement from Mr. Makin.
Oh, yeah, I'll make a statement. First of all, um I've seen board mem, I've seen board meetings down in Pennsylvania, Midwest. They're cursing and screaming. It's my First Amendment right to speak uh like I wanted this uh hearing. You guys have no right to tell me that I can't speak a certain way. I've been respectful. I've called each one of you members by your last name. Uh, you guys are talking to a black woman here. You're calling her by her first name. That's very disrespectful while she's talking to you and she's speaking to you guys and she's calling you by her last name. I'm speaking about Ms. Ford here. So I'm the one that's operating with respect here. Okay, so I I would like an apology from you, uh, Mrs. Mr. Scott, for that second. In the Mitch Whitehurst case, the Mitch Whitehurst case was supposed to have these implements already in place. Now, you guys had, you guys had uh one month, you have one year and eight months to implement the whistleblower process, the things that would have helped Miss Jeremy in her case. Now, after the Mitch Whitehurst case, those things that was implemented in both places and the suggestions that was in those cases, you guys didn't do any of them. So those, that Mitch Whitehurst case was supposed to be the elements that protected Ms. Ford. That's the reason why a black woman would speak up. And you guys did nothing. So now you're saying in her case, you have implemented the things that should have been implemented in the Mitch Whitehurst case. You had four years and you did nothing. And now you're telling me I'm speaking to you wrong when my daughter can't go inside of a school. Okay, Mr. Scott, I need an apology from you. Second, in the investigation, thirdly, in the uh investigation, it said clearly that the superintendent had limited the scope of the investigation. So therefore, in that language alone, it wasn't a complete investigation. So in the language that started the investigation, it said that the investigation was limited and the investigators had a problem with it. And you guys are worried about me exercising my First Amendment right where there's, there's continually black kids that's being touched. There's continually allegations that's coming out of this program that's been there for years. You're worried about how I'm saying it? Well, why don't you worry about educating these black kids and my daughter? Okay, don't be concerned by the way I communicate. Be concerned by doing your job. Ms. uh Ms. Edwards was there. Ms. uh Ms. Moore was there. These, these things should have already been in place and they're not.
All right, thank you, Mr. Makin, for. The board will go ahead and vote now on the resolution before us. Kara, could you read it to us so that we're clear on what we are voting on at this time?
What I have is motion to uphold the sufficiency of the district's investigation of the complaint.
All right, so just to be clear with everyone, if you're voting yes, you're saying the investigation, the complaint was sufficient. If you are voting no, you're saying the investigation of the complaint was not sufficient. Are we prepared to vote?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah.
We will now, well, I, I was just asking if we were ready to vote. The board will now vote on the resolution be before us. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
Of course.
Are there any abstentions? The resolution is approved by a vote of seven to zero and the meeting is now adjourned and the board directors, you are ahead into the executive session. Thank you all for your time tonight. Good evening.